Good evening and welcome to the School District Board 196, Board of Education, School, our school board meeting tonight. Goodness sakes, it's Monday, September 12th. I want to call the meeting to order. I'm going to ask you to rise and join us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence this evening. We want to observe a moment of silence for two district employees who passed away recently. Robin Schmitz, who was a beloved nurse at Rosemont Middle School, and John Othermedicine. John was a parent of children in our district, a bus driver, and a leader in our Native American Parent Advisory Committee. Our thoughts are with them, with their parents, with their, with their families, and with their District 196 family. Thank you. They will both be missed. Good evening this evening. Secoude will not be with us in this evening, and Board, just as for reference, we are working off a revised agenda, so we will be the, we had to remove the consent agenda item of the Board, School Board employee, because we have to vote on that when we're all here, so that has been removed. So, we are working on an advised, a revised agenda this evening, and taking off of that, taking that off the agenda. With that, I'll ask for approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Suchin, a second by Art. All in favor of the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a six-zero vote. We have recognitions tonight, and tonight, there are no recognitions. We've got lots of kids doing lots of things, and if you've driven by any of our schools, you know that. And there's been band competitions, and there's been football games, and go to any of our schools, just about any time, and you'll see kids out doing something. We'll turn it over to the superintendent for recognition of students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to start by recognizing our outstanding District 196 employees for getting us off to a great start to the 2022-23 school year. Our students are excited to be back at school, building relationships with friends and teachers that provide the foundation for success every school year. We'll hear details about back to school in a few minutes and a report from some of our education directors. Next, congratulations to the members of our district's award-winning Finance Department on earning the meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International for the eighth year in a row. The award recognizes excellence in school budget presentation and is only given to school districts that have met or exceeded the rigorous program criteria and review by professional auditors. The award is this year's preliminary budget, which is available on the Finance Department page at district196.org, along with budgets and financial documents from the previous nine years. Congratulations and thank you to all District 196 employees on helping create a work environment and culture that resulted in District 196 once again being named to the Forbes List of America's Best In-State Employers. District 196 is ranked number four of the 50 businesses that made the list from Minnesota, and we are the only school district on that list. Selection was based on results of an online survey of 70,000 Americans working for employers with at least 500 employees. The anonymous survey asked respondents to rate their employers on a variety of criteria, including work environment, compensation, and opportunities for advancement. They were also asked how likely they'd be to recommend their employer to others. This award shows that District 196 is an employer of choice for people looking to make a difference in public education, in addition to being a district of choice for families who move here for the quality of education provided. And we are just so grateful for every person who chooses to come to work. Whatever your function is in the district, you make a difference for our students, and we are really proud that you chose to be part of our educational system. And for the last item in my report, I would like to invite Director of Secondary Education, Michael Bolsoni, to the podium to introduce our principal and assistant principal at Valley Middle School of STEM.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the Board, and Superintendent Krieger. It is my pleasure to return tonight to introduce two administrators. Both have years of experience in leadership in District 196 and have recently accepted positions in new official roles. First, I would like to introduce you to Dr. Stacy Buckwald. Stacy joined Valley Middle School as the Assistant Principal in 2010. Last year, she served in the role of interim principal in Dave McCaig's leave. Stacy has a bachelor's degree in psychology, a master's degree in school counseling, and a doctorate in educational leadership. She has been instrumental in many facets of the success of Valley Middle School of STEM, including the transition to becoming a STEM magnet school and being a major part of their school building renovation, the major construction that happened just a few years ago. Please join me in congratulating and welcoming Stacy into the official role of principal of Valley Middle School of STEM.
Thank you, Superintendent Krieger, Michael Bolsoni, and the School Board. I'm just really humbled by this opportunity to continue to serve our community. No one expects to come into the role the way that I did, and I have such honor and respect for Dave McCaig, who has served our building for so many years, and our district for so many years. I learned a lot from him during my years working under Dave McCaig, but I also have an amazing staff that together, we work together to serve our students and our community and our parents every day, and I am just so thankful to be able to continue to serve in this role, because I know post-pandemic, we're gonna thrive. We're gonna be so true to our mission of educating innovative thinkers at Valley Middle School of STEM. So, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Stacy.
Next, I would like to introduce Stephanie Thomas. Stephanie started in the district in 1991 as a teacher at Dakota Hills Middle School. She also served on the staff at Blackhawk Middle School for many years as a math teacher. In 2005, she joined the administrative team at Valley Middle School as an assistant administrator. Last year, Stephanie served as the interim assistant principal. She has a bachelor's degree in education and a master's degree in educational leadership. She is well-known for the relationship she has built in the community and always brings a positive approach to her work. One thing that Stephanie and I share is the year that we had our eighth graders who went to Valley Middle School. When they moved over to Apple Valley High School for that one year during construction, Stephanie became their principal on site at Apple Valley High School. I was the principal at the time, and she was the administrator for the eighth graders. Those eighth graders now just graduated, so they just went through their graduation last year, but Stephanie did just a wonderful job in bringing them into a very different environment and made it a very successful year for those students and that staff in which they still talk about. So, please join me in congratulating and welcoming Stephanie into the official role of Assistant Principal at Valley Middle School of STEM.
Superintendent Krieger, Michael Bolsoni, School Board, I, we, I am so excited for this position. As Michael spoke about, I started in this district in 1991, so I have the privilege of working here for over 30 years. And I am so excited to continue that commitment with the staff, the students, and the families at Valley Middle School of STEM. We have great things happening in our building, and the energy in the first three weeks of school has just been amazing. So, we're ready to do great things, and I am so excited for this opportunity. Thank you.
That concludes the introductions. Thank you.
Thank you. We are all excited to see what you have to do. We know your work, and we are excited to see your passion and your commitment to the kids at Valley Middle. Congratulations. We have no one signed up this evening under special communication request. We will move on to the items of consent agenda. Under consent, we have minutes of the August 8th, 2022, regular school board meeting, gifts, advertising revenue, summary of claims for July 2022, permanent fund transfer for fiscal year 2022, increase in adult meal prices, application for cooperative sponsorship for Nordic Ski, personnel, pay rates for substitute, temporary, and part-time employees, 2022-23 CAP Agency Head Start Integration Agreement, Special Education, Community Education Advisory Council appointment, appointees, appointments, employment agreements, an agreement for student teaching experience with the University of Wisconsin River Falls. We have agreement for our clinical experience, University of Wisconsin River Falls. We have a joint powers agreement with the City of Rosemont for student parking, and we have a joint powers agreement between the County of Dakota, District 196, for the provision of school resource officers. With that, are there any items that Board members would like to pull this evening? Suchin?
On item number 11, the CAP Agency, I was wondering if we could do that vote separately. I happen to be on the Board of the CAP Agency, so I'll probably abstain from that vote.
Okay.
But the rest I have reviewed, and I'm in full support of the rest.
We will pull that off of this vote. We will move that down to, I think we can, we most of the time move it to the end of the agenda, or we could just move, I think we can just do it right after this one.
Yeah.
So, we'll move it into its own separate thing, and that will be the CAP Agency Head Start Integration Agreement. Very good. With that, is there approval to approve the consent agenda excluding that CAP Agency Head Start Interagency Agreement?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Joel, a second by Corey. All in favor of the amended consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a six-zero. Now, we have a standalone CAP 2022-23 CAP Agency Head Start Integration Agreement, Special Education. Is there a motion and a second to approve that?
Approval. Second.
Motion by Art, a second by Corey. All in favor of approving that CAP Agency Head Start Interagency Agreement indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank, abstain?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes on a five-zero-one vote. Thank you very much. This evening, we are going to do reports, and we have our back-to-school 2023 reports. We have Secondary of Education, Michael Bolsoni, Elementary Education Director, Sally Saliday, and Community Ed Director, Kaia Bruce, who all take us through what fun it has been to launch our beginning of the school year. I know I was with new teachers and watched the excitement there, and it just been, and we created a whole lot of excitement. So, I can't, we can't wait to hear from you guys this evening.
Absolutely. We're feeling the same thing. So, good evening again, Chairperson Magnuson, School Board member, Superintendent Krieger. We are here tonight to present our annual back-to-school update. We have had the opportunity to visit several schools and have had really good opportunities to meet with students and staff and experience the joy that comes with the first few days of school and even the first week of school. Days before the school year started, Superintendent Krieger had the opportunity to sit down with some of our administrators and discuss their commitment to education and also to our schools. And these values they talked about are, and sentiments are shared widely among our staff. We want to show you part of that discussion now to set the stage for the upcoming school year.
When I think about how, what drew me into education, really, it goes back to when I was just a child of six years old, being in a classroom with a not-nice teacher. I just remember sitting there and thinking, I want to be a teacher, but I want to be kind, and I, and I appreciate that I'm in this position as superintendent where I can help to ensure that every single child feels that kindness and respect that they deserve in our classrooms every day.
For me, it really has to do with just the, the belief I have in the nobility of teaching and the importance of learning.
What continues to keep me in this position in education is the purpose, and there's such strong purpose in what we do, and with strong purpose comes a lot of energy and emotion and work, and, but that's, the purpose is what keeps me in it.
I am so looking forward to a year where the doors are open, the kids are in, and the teachers are ready to go.
I'm excited about the opportunity for collaboration, and there's a lot of sharing of best practices. There's a lot of conversation to make sure that we're helping families who are transitioning from one school to another. That collaboration, I think, is kind of the oil that keeps the machine going.
We are in an enviable position as far as our staffing. In addition to having the best teachers in front of our kids, we're looking pretty good, and we're feeling confident that we'll be able to start the school year just full-up, providing what our, what our kids and families need.
Nationwide, that we're down 20% in teachers graduating right now, but we aren't struggling.
We've attracted a lot of new, great teachers coming out of college. In the midst of all of those types of hires and us being able to fill our positions, we've really been able to increase our diversity within our staff, so that our staffs continue to look more and more like the students in which they're working with.
When you think about the adults in our world right now have been struggling with self-regulation, of course, some of our children who don't have the experiences, the skill, they're going to struggle a bit being put into these different environments they haven't been accustomed to. We've always had kids that needed support, but I think there's more kids and more supports that are needed coming into this time.
Our students are busy. They're busy outside of school with, with activities, fine arts, athletics. They have homework on top of a full day. How do we help navigate and manage that, and what do we have control over in the building to help alleviate some of those stressful feelings? Our, our kids would also say they, they're interested in, in support and making healthy connections and friendships.
We've got wonderful licensed school counselors that are, that can help students in any situation. We've got, our faculty are really, we're, we're asking them kind of be emotional scientists. So, you know, what's, what's going on? And when you think about meeting them with relationships, it really is. Are we on a daily basis expressing care?
I think that we're doing the, the work right now in order to be in the right mindset to be able to work with kids and be able to recognize what the stresses are for them and try to help them alleviate those things, or give them skills to be able to cope with the things that they're dealing with.
Our community expects infinite possibilities for each and every child, and, and that's what we can do together, too. Together, we can really work at how are we ensuring our kids are coming to us with their needs met, and if they're not met as they cross that door, what supports do we have in place? We've got people in place. We've got just a different skill set. For most of the adults in our buildings than they probably had two or three years ago, because as adults, we've had to continue to learn, too.
If you think about District 196 and its, and its history, it's changed considerably, and we haven't fought that. We're changing with it. We've done a lot of great things in terms of trying to put an emphasis on hiring a diverse quality teacher candidate pool. We've done the same thing in our administrative area. We've done the same thing in our operations, and, and I think that having that mirror image for students to be able to see people who are professionals, who are in their buildings, who are invested and committed to their education is extremely important.
We embrace the multiple perspectives, and we embrace when there's students and others that maybe are different than us that come in, and be able to share those perspectives, understand those perspectives, just makes us all better and really enriches the whole experience that we have in our community.
We're all 196 together. We are doing the very best we can for each and every child, and that is equity work, is to ensure that every child has opportunities, every child sees themselves and see, and learns about others through our curriculum. We've worked on it for a long time, but we've probably gotten more explicit and perhaps a bit better at naming it and at responding.
The tenor here in the district is, is that, yep, we've learned some stuff, and we're gonna keep learning stuff, because that is how we're gonna be connecting with our families, connecting with employees, teachers, that maybe haven't existed in our district before. That's an important piece for us moving forward in the future, is to keep growing. You can't just think that we've arrived.
I think that theme of connect, collaborate, and celebrate is really going to hold us strong throughout this year, that we have to really focus on the joy and the celebration.
I'm excited about the future of the district as it embraces its globalism across the district.
I'm just excited for our kids, because I feel like we've got everything in place. We've got resources and great teachers, and we're ready to go. We're gonna move them on, and they're gonna show up in high school, and they're gonna be ready to go and change the world.
I think our collective community just needs a sense of joy and positivity and growth. That's energizing, and we need that good energy to have a really, really fantastic school year.
All right. So, those are some highlights from a conversation that I think lasted about an hour, but you gotta hear, you got to hear some of the, the parts in the video. And as you heard, our theme for this year is to connect, collaborate, and celebrate. And we want to share some examples of our programs, events, initiatives that highlight these themes tonight. Our primary goal continues to be to keep students safe, engaged, and learning through the many opportunities within our AAA philosophy of academics, arts, and athletics. We welcome students and families back through a variety of events to build community and relationships prior to the start of school. We had strong attendance and engagement at all of our family events. These events included open houses, kindergarten transition days, elementary assessment days, incoming student assemblies, and opportunities to meet teachers and staff. Even our 196 online hosted an in-person open house this year, and it was very strongly attended, which was just great. We welcomed over 2,500 pre-K through five students just last week, and 15,000, approximately 15,600 secondary students. 196 online continues to serve our students in grades one through 12, serving approximately 250 students. Our official, our, our official enrollment counts will be taken on October 1st, and we will report that at a later date for you officially. Our first two days of school were designated to welcome students back to school in a supportive environment, focusing on social-emotional needs, relationships, and back-to-school logistics. Each school developed a schedule that provided students with opportunities to meet their teachers, interact with classmates, build a sense of community, establish routines, and celebrate the start of the school year.
Good evening. Over the summer and into Workshop Week, we have engaged in shared professional learning focused on instruction and student outcomes. Teams of teachers, administrators, and other licensed staff across our district continue to work tirelessly to plan for a successful experience for all students. This ongoing, purposeful, student-centered collaboration, which occurs throughout the year, has us energized and excited for a great school year ahead. Collaborating with community partners is a benefit for all of our schools and our communities. Collaboration can take shape in our schools in many ways. Volunteering, providing educational experiences for students, mentoring, teaching after-school programs, and financial support are just a few ways community members support our school. We are grateful to partner with our cities, churches, fire and police departments, libraries, restaurants, businesses, and many other community groups, because we know that together, schools, families, and communities are essential to the healthy development of all of our children. This year, our district will be collaborating with families to support students around digital citizenship and well-being. This collaboration is designed to offer students, teachers, and families opportunities to engage in conversation and share helpful strategies around this topic. A proactive plan has been created that speaks to the common expectations around the use of digital tools. Best practices in digital citizenship and technology expectations will also be integrated in students' classrooms. Instruction at every grade level, as well as each school, will host a family tech night this fall.
Good evening. Our AAA philosophy recognizes and celebrates arts and athletics along with academics. Just a few weeks ago, the Rosemont High School Marching Band accepted an invitation to attend the Rose Bowl Parade in Pasadena, California in January of 2023. All four of our high schools have started fall sports and activities with high levels of participation. During this school year, it is important to remember to celebrate the achievements, big and small, and reconnect with the joy of learning and growing. Upon entering our buildings, one can see and feel the excitement, engagement, joy, and positivity of students, families, and staff. We look forward to a joyful 2022-23 school year because we have over 30,000 unique reasons to celebrate in District 196. A couple quotes from the first days of school. While riding the school bus, a chaperone overheard two kindergarten students talking, and one said, "Can you believe we get to go to kindergarten?" And on another bus, one kindergarten student exclaimed to another kindergarten student, "Can you believe our principal has bald hair?" We are celebrating 50 years of community education in District 196 this year. The program has grown exponentially over the years to meet the needs of our community and will continue to do so over the next 50-plus years. Join us at a variety of events throughout the year highlighting our celebration. And as always, we are offering a wide variety of classes and opportunities for people of all ages this fall, 1,145 of them to be exact. In District 196, the sky's the limit for all ages. And, as you heard earlier, we are celebrating District 196 being ranked fourth of the 50 Minnesota employers that made Forbes' annual list of Best In-State Employers for 2022. District 196 is the only school district and one of six public sector employment employers on the Minnesota list. "District 196 continues to be a school district of choice for families because of the quality of education provided and the boundless opportunities available for students to pursue their infinite possibilities in academics, arts, and athletics," said Superintendent Mary Krieger. This recognition from Forbes shows that District 196 is also a district of choice among employees, allowing us to attract and retain the best teachers, administrators, and support staff in our industry. We value all of our employees and recognize how each of them contributes to the success of District 196. Each September, our families entrust us with what they treasure most, their children, and we are steadfast in our mission to create a safe, equitable, and inclusive environment so that our community of learners will flourish socially, emotionally, and academically each and every day. In visiting schools and talking to staff, principals, and families, it is apparent we are off to a wonderful start to what promises to be a great school year. Thank you.
Connect, collaborate, and celebrate. We are off to a great start. Board members, any reflections on the first days of school? I know lots of you have kids going off, and it's been, it's been exciting to be able to start it out with being with new teachers, over 240 of them. When I asked them where they had come from, about a third of the, I would guess maybe a third or a fourth of them had graduated from the district. About that many had more than 10 years of teaching experience. So, we're not just bringing in new people, brand-new to teaching. We're bringing in people who across, who have been teaching and have, have that expertise that they're bringing along. So, I thought that was interesting. Another fact that, or I'm not sure if it's a fact, but I've heard that the participa, participation at high schools and middle schools in extracurricular activities has been increased, which leads me to think kids didn't like being at home alone. They're coming back now to connect and celebrate with their peers. I don't know if you have heard that, Michael?
Anecdotally, we're hearing the exact same thing, that there's a lot of participation in activities, athletics. Kaia, earlier today, talked about community ed participation being up as well. I had a chance last Thursday, or a couple Thursdays ago, to go to, we had four high school football ga, well, three high school football games, but all four schools playing, and the stands were all packed. So, there's a lot of members of the community coming out to celebrate.
Exactly. So, celebrate, connect, collaborate, and celebrate with our students. You will be amazed. Any other Board members?
Thank you. I mean, these are all wonderful comments. I have two, very vocal sample size of two at my home, and, and they definitely feel a little different vibrancy this time, and I'm so hopeful that everyone else shares that, and hopeful that we have a wonderful year ahead. So, thank you for everything that each of you do.
Thank you. We'll move on to items of old business this evening. Under old business, we have Policy 503, Student Rights and Responsibilities. It's School District General Counsel, Jill Coyle. This is an action item this evening.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the Board, and Superintendent Krieger. I am before you on old business. I am before you on old business tonight, taking another look at Policy 503, Student Rights and Responsibilities. You should all have in your packet a copy of the policy with the changes proposed in underline and strikeout, but for reference, you will find all of the changes in sections 3.6.1, 3.6.2 and 6.2.4. We went over those proposed changes in detail when the policy came before you as new business in August and I won't go into all of that detail this time, other than to point out that two of the changes are simply intended to mirror changes that you made to the overview of student rights and responsibilities in the spring. And then the third change is intended to add a reference to a data privacy law that was added by our legislature in 2022. So with that, this is an old business item. The administration is seeking your approval, but if I can answer any questions or provide you with more detail about the changes, I'm happy to do so.
Perfect. Before we move into conversation, I will ask for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Joel and a second by Suchan. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? The Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is mailed to every family in the, in the district, so you should have that soon or already do have that.
They should have it, yes.
So these will be changes that will be added to that. Any questions from the board? As Jill said, we saw this in detail at the last meeting, so, and the changes have not, nothing has changed since then. So we have a motion by Joel, a second by Suchan, to approve Policy 503, Student Rights and Responsibility. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on a six-zero vote. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
We have another action item this evening and that's the collective bargaining agreement with the vehicle technicians. We have Human Resources Coordinator, Shelly Munson.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, School Board Members, Superintendent Krieger. Also have with me Karen Dayon, Coordinator of Transportation. And we have before you today the collective bargaining agreement with the school district's vehicle technicians. These employees represented by Minnesota Teamsters Union Local 320 ratified the proposed working agreement on August 10th. Before I highlight the terms of this two-year agreement for you, I want to review a little bit about the challenges we face this year with this contract. Our vehicle technicians' salary schedule was not competitive with other school districts or with contractors of bus services who serve school districts around us. This caused us to come to you to request authority for a market adjustment. This market adjustment allowed us to move to the midpoint of our comparable group. Then we applied the market adjustment to salary schedule and then applied the two-and-a-half percent increase to the schedule for pay and differentials each year, increased the district's contribution to health insurance by 5% each year, increased the district's bench to the 403B matching program by $125 each year, and there were some other minor language modifications as well as housekeeping updates to the contract. The total of the new costs during the term of the agreement are within the budget parameters you set forth. On behalf of administration, we recommend that you approve the collective bargaining agreement I just summarized. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you. Before we move on to conversation, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Suchan, a second by Joel. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions and comments from board members? It's within, yeah, Joel.
Just happy that we were able to bring this up, bring them up to market.
Yep.
It's because they are a very, very integral and very good group.
A small group that has a big impact, obviously.
Exactly, exactly. So bringing them up to market standards and keeping an eye on that is always a good idea. So thank you for doing that. With that, seeing no other questions or comments, we have a motion by Suchan and a second by Joel to approve the collective bargaining agreement with our vehicle techs. All in favor of the agenda, item indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on a six-zero vote. Thank you both. Next up is board member and superintendent updates. Board members with items they'd like to report this evening?
I actually have one.
Go ahead, Corey. Yes.
So, I just wanted to make a quick announcement about the Warrior 196 5K. So every year, there's a 5K that's done. It honors five District 196 graduates who gave their lives in Iraq and Afghanistan. All the proceeds from the 5K are given back to our district high schools in the form of scholarships. It's a really good program. The race is September 24th this year. They're a little low on registrations. In case I lost anyone at 5K, it's a run and walk. So walking's permitted and I usually do the walking myself. So if anyone would like to sign up, you can go to warrior196.org to look for more information.
Where do they have it? Where does it run?
It's at Apple Valley High School. It rotates between all four of our comprehensive high schools every year and this year it's at Apple Valley.
Nice, thank you. Any other items board members would like to report? Seeing none? Well, oh yeah, go ahead Bianca, sorry.
So I got the privilege to see the Rosemont and Eastview Marching Band this weekend and I'm embarrassed to say I haven't seen a marching band much in my life and they were phenomenal and amazing and worth every penny to go out and see. And it turns out, you can see them again coming up on September 24th at the Rosemont Festival. It starts at noon and they are performing, Eastview performs at 4:30 and Rosemont at 4:45. If you have time, I would highly recommend going to see them.
It is totally amazing and it is so fun to go to that band festival because you see so many different types of marching bands. And if you haven't seen, our district just is amazing. So yes, go see. Superintendent with updates.
I just have a reminder for our families. I would like to encourage all 196 parents and guardians to update their family information on record with the district by completing the online review through their Infinite Campus Parent Portal account. Say that quickly. This is the one time each year the district asks parents to complete the review to ensure schools have up-to-date emergency contact information, student health needs and more. It's important for schools to have current information in order to be notified in case of emergency, changes in the school schedule and to receive regular communication from their child's school and the district. All parents and guardians are encouraged to have their own Infinite Campus Parent Account. To start an account, parents should contact their child's school to receive an activation key. And again, I just want to say thank you to our amazing teachers and our amazing staff and families and mostly our kids for really starting the year strong and it's going to be a great year for everyone. We'll just have to keep all this good energy and pull it back out again in February.
Here, here. We are at the end of our agenda this evening. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is right here on September 26th. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Corey, a second by Bianca. All in favor of adjourning indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, we're adjourned.